Keep your boss paying you.
Right, he's working on it.
He's 14 years old. I know all this.
Stuff going on.
Okay, I need to take my camera off. Yeah.
Say, I've got the forms, so I can start, or we're ready to go. She's gonna call. Brady will be here.
You can switch. My camera is over here. No.
One last problem. Hey Karen?
Yes?
You tell me whatever you feel, ready to create a starter?
Yeah.
What, fix it?
On a different chair.
I can sit like.
This is Jared Morris from my IT department with the city of Tempe. I was wondering if anyone who is on the call could just test the audio real quick? Just wanna make sure our levels are correct, thank you.
How about this?
Thank you so much.
It's good. All right. Well, let's go ahead and get started then. Good afternoon, everyone, welcome to the Tempe City Council and Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Board, otherwise known as the affiliate of this joint meeting. I'll tell people too, you can visit tempe.gov/council/ council meeting info for public viewing and attendance information. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams as well. Just a note to everyone in the room, there were, last time there was a meeting held in this room like last week, there were some audio issues, it'd be very difficult to hear without only that one speaker in the center of the table. So if you are speaking, I would ask that you do speak like this and project so people at home can hear, and no one from the public has to contact us later. Jared is currently checking to make sure that it's positioned just perfectly to capture all voices. So with that said, I guess we can probably go ahead and go to item number two here, which is welcome to the introduction. Maybe if I start, hammer with you, and we circle around.
Yeah. City Clerk.
Jared Morris, Tempe County. Timbers, Director of Community Health and Services.
Good afternoon and welcome, Roseanne Chastity, Trip City Manager.
Good afternoon, Ken Boy.
Flo Riverman, Arne Lynch.
Doreen Garland, Councilmember.
Cory Woods, Mayor.
For Dana Hosh, Councilmember.
Gold LaBarra, Councilmember.
Dr. Allen. Affiliate Director.
I'm Tavia Harris, I'm Board of Directors for the affiliate.
Ponce de Loz, Board of Directors, affiliate.
Teresa Carmichael, CPA and CFO for the affiliate. Alun B. Kane, Deputy Director of Community Health and Human Services, as well as the affiliate president and management member.
Good afternoon, Wydell Holmes, Director of Innovation and Strategic Management.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much, really appreciate it. I'm gonna move forward here to item number three, which is Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing Organizational Updates, and I will turn it over to Irma.
Thank you, Mayor Woods, Councilmembers, Board of Directors. Welcome today, and thank you for your time and your talent that you're bringing to the table today. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements about the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing's organization update, if you well. So, seated next to me on the right is Teresa Carmichael. She is the affiliate's new CFO, so we're really happy to have her on board, and if you don't mind, she'll be there, just give me a little. I'm the principal in a CPA firm that's located in Mesa. We've been there for 30 years. We have a large population of nonprofit clients. Probably in connection with the coalition, I serve Arizona. Housing and retail officials. Have some small locals, like the Mesa Chamber client, Nationals, the African Association of Men in Nursing. So they have a wide spectrum of nonprofits we serve. I've sat in a board position on a couple of nonprofits, if you're familiar with Mark Community Resources, now known as. On that board. President, I've served on the board of the Mesa Association. So I understand that close relationship that some nonprofits have with government. Currently serving on a newly bought. A bit of good solid nonprofit.
Really quickly, I forgot to do this as well, I didn't go to people on the phone for introductions. I can see, Kristy, can you go ahead and introduce yourself, and can you also tell me how the sound is for where you are?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen and everyone in the room, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, I can hear you, you cut out just a little bit here and there. And like you said, Mayor, if they could project a little bit, I think we might be able to hear a little bit better as well. But my name is Kristy Alvarado, I'm with MEP Affordable Management Services, and we manage 52 properties for the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing. We started May 1st with Irma, and we're super excited about this business relationship and working with her on affordable housing.
Thank you, Kristy, really appreciate it. Let me also just really quickly next go to our city attorney, Sonia Blaine, if you wanna introduce yourself. Or we can just come back, we know she's there, one of, one people know we have legal representation in the house, so.
Mayor Woods, also Catherine Chang is on our board and in the Teams meeting.
Okay. Kathy, can you come off mute and introduce yourself to the group as well?
Hi, this is Kathy Chang, Irma just introduced me, so happy to serve on the board and happy to be here, thank you.
Kristy was kind enough to go ahead and introduce her.
Mayor Woods, Councilwoman, just for those back in. You hear my name? Southville, my name. Pride, study law. Nothing more. At least. See. In Southville. On. To the city. And inside of them.
For kidding. Thanks so much, you and her comments or questions for. They see Tom Johnson breaking the table. Oh, just technical, okay. Well, I saw financial updates, so I was like, Tom, got something for that? All right, then you can go ahead and do the item number four, the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Financial Care, Councilor.
Um. Sometimes in that period. Generally. Based on. Part and experience with that. This is something. Make your way please, I wanted. On this day. Very. Separate one. Insurance, insurance, I'm registered with this corner. Yeah. Essentially. Essentially. That's it. The most important thing. I'm actually. Do. Don't walk. Do, we can tell you. You're doing, if you have any. So, yes. We have a budget taken. Action, reconciliation, the budget. Probably 40%. It's not as easy as one of the points, but I think you're hearing something. But we actually agree it's in fact, 100% of the content we pay. Are consigned under as a percentage of donations. Manage my.
Week in. I would. Maybe in the next 30 days.
So, really quick, sorry to do this, we're gonna be a 10% of this issue to be cleared in the room, so. Let's take a little bit of a recess, work some couple of things, and I'll bring us all back together, and tell me it's all fixed. Thank you. Hello, can you all hear me today? Sorry, this is Jared Morris, goodbye to you.
Okay, um, let's see, Vice Mayor Adams, I know you're on the phone, can you hear us? All right, let's see, Kathy, can you hear us?
I do hear us, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, perfect, okay, excellent. With that said, Jared, do you think we're good to start again?
All right.
That was my question, I had a question.
Yep, just so, just note whatever for all those watching at home, Vice Mayor Adams is on the phone. Councilmember Katie could not attend this evening because he's out of the country. So with that, I will turn it back over to Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, my question was about the HOA fees. I was just wondering, I thought that the HOA fees became, you know, the owner, just the owner of the property was supposed to pay HOA, not the renters. So yes, this is our, this is our, that's what we have presented on. Oh, okay, now, I'm, okay, I get it now, because I was confused, I was like, wait a minute. Okay, so this is not on, I, I thought we were like, providing for the renters, but, okay, so this is, okay. And all the others part of it, yeah. All right, that's all I needed to know.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Hodge, Board Member Drummond.
Yeah, I had a question about the depreciation. It seems, I don't know anything about that, but it seems like that's a very large number for very few years of accumulated property. We're writing off depreciation on the buildings and sales, and the land's holding value increasing?
Yes, generally, typically, we use 20% salvage or land value, we assign 20%, 80%. And depreciate to 80% residential properties of 27 and a half year life, and straight line purpose. Yeah, it's, it's definitely, commercial, if you're used to that, is 39 years, so it's a little longer than residential.
And that's, that, to me, seemingly one of the numbers due to, we have 54 properties.
Correct.
So even small amounts of depreciation.
It looks good, yep, it sure looks good.
Yes, Irma.
And Teresa, do you mind sharing your big lift, your big accomplishment?
Oh, yes, so, one of the things we noted when we first came on board was that there were property tax expenses. The affiliate was paying real estate taxes, and I knew from prior experience with clients that we should be taxed exempt. Now, as municipalities having owned the properties prior to beading them over to the affiliate, there was no property tax. But the moment they were beaded over to the nonprofit, the county kicks in and charges real estate tax. So that was one of my first questions, is why aren't we taxing them? So we did, in fact, apply during the application period in January, and we were approved for an organizational exemption. So we're very excited about that, that's thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, literally. The other great news I received just before I left for this meeting, we had called the county because in a prior situation, slightly similar, on another nonprofit, they missed applying. This is an annual exemption, every year you must apply for it. They missed applying, and their tax bill was $23,000 for their property. And we found a way to get retroactively moved. So we called the county last week and asked if there was any potential relief for us for partiers. And we talked through the process, and moving forward, we think we will have relief for those property taxes prior to exemptions, for '22 and possibly '21 as well. So we're going to work on that.
So Teresa, do you have an estimated amount of dollars that are diverted back into the affiliate and having to be paid in property tax?
I wish I did, we haven't had enough time to explore. We know for a fact that we're in a rareage right now of approximately $10,000. So that's $10,000 that I do not expect we'll pay. We have paid in the past, the past two years, $35,000, and my hope is that we can improve that as well. But to give you an accurate annual, I would be taking a stab.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything else on item number 4A? Seeing none, thank you so much. That will take us to item number 5, City of Tempe Affordable Housing Asset Map Preview, and I will turn this over to Wydel.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Board, and Council. I'm Wydel Holmes, Director, San Juan Innovation Office. And first of all, at the last joint meeting, you asked for data, and that warms our hearts as we are a data-driven community alongside our stakeholders. And so today, I'd like to share with you eight maps that we'd like to preview with you. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and thank Dr. Stephanie Dietrich, she's from our IT, she manages our IT and GIS team. And she is the brilliance behind these images that you're going to see today. And we're very open to your feedback and questions that we can answer today, and if not, we'll follow up with you on some that we may not have answers for. So this first map here is in regards to the Coalition's housing portfolio. So these are board members, these are your assets. There's about 61 rental units, and you can see that the legend down in the middle, the middle of the slide there will show you the concentration in these hexagon, hexagon areas. We have purposely not pinpointed the exact addresses out of privacy for our, for our tenants, but wanted to give you the general idea of where these are in relationship to across the city. You can see that most of these are above US 60. And so that was one of the questions that we chatted about at our last meeting in regards to where are the Coalition's assets. So this is one example of one of the maps I'd like to share with you. The next map is in regards to market rate properties that have affordable housing units, and we use the term time bound. So these are private developments of about 75 properties, and these properties are, they basically have a clock on them. So one of them ranges from the one in the top left-hand corner, that is the 20 to 37 units. That is about 17 years to remain in affordable housing status. And the other one is about 30 years. And so this is another strategy that our community has in regards to working with private development to make sure that we are all doing our part in regards to affordable housing. And you'll see that most of those, or all of those assets right now, for these private developments, for the time-bound units, are above US 60, north of US 60. And then our map, our next map is about our Housing Choice voucher program. So Irma and her team, they work with federal government, about $13 million in housing subsidies each year, and they have over 1,200 units. And majority of the vouchers are utilized north of US 60. And you can realize that when Irma mentioned at our last meeting, she does have some landlord strategies that her team is putting into place so that we can start utilizing vouchers also south of US 60. So this just gives you an idea of, again, denoted for privacy, kind of the concentration of where a lot of these units lie here in the city. And then hometown for all land locations. This is land that was purchased by the city or transferred from the city for development. And these would be transferred to a nonprofit, which the affiliate is one of the nonprofits that this land would be transferred to. And so you can see we have about five areas, parcels right now, that are, that are in this category, with three of them already being purchased, and one of the parcels being already transferred for, for units, for affordable units. And then on the next slide, what's interesting about what Dr. Dietrich has done with the gallery, when we give you the active link, when we've kind of gone through some of our QAQC, you'll be able to see some other maps that, for example, this one, this is the percent of affordable rentals. And you'll be able to see a difference between what happened in 2020 on your left to where we are at as of last year, 2022. Overall, the rent in 2022 is more affordable, the deeper the purple, more affordable, north of US 60, and then therefore consequently less affordable, south of US 60. The most significant increase of rent has been on the west side of Tempe. As you can see, we've kind of had some lighter parcels turn a little bit darker there. So the other thing too is you'll see in the right-hand southeast corner, if you look at Corona Village down in the bottom there, all the way to the right, those, that area has become less affordable in regards to rental, rental affordability. So the next map, again, another bit of a contrast between 2020 and 2022, is the median gross rent. And the farther south you go in Tempe, we will find higher pockets of rent, especially in the most south, southern part of Tempe. You'll see a little bit towards the southeast corner of Tempe as well, and alongside that 101 corridor.
When you, the gross, is this like 1,000, the 1,750, is that per one bedroom, or is that?
It's by unit, I don't have the bedroom, numbers of bedrooms available for this one. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, because it makes a difference, yeah, because it makes a little bit of difference if it's one bedroom.
Versus five bedrooms.
So I wanted to.
I think it's just this unit, the, the home or the unit itself, in regards to median gross.
That's a great question, and, you know, because we report in, this data is derived directly from the 22 Matrix of Affordability and Inventory Analysis. And that being said, we were reporting everything based on a family, for median family income. So I'm wondering if this is at least a two-bedroom.
Okay. All right, that's all I needed to know.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Perhaj. Board Member Drummond?
Um, yeah, I had a question about the depreciation. It seems, I don't know anything about that, but it seems like that's a very large number for very few years of accumulating property. Are we writing off depreciation on the buildings and sales?
Yes.
And the land's holding value or increasing?
Yes, generally typically we use 20% salvage or land value. We assign 20%, 80% and depreciate to 80%. Residential properties at 27 and a half year life and straight line purpose. Yeah, it's definitely commercial, if you're used to that, is 39 years. So it's a little longer than residential.
And that's, to me seemingly one of the numbers due to, we have 54 properties.
Correct.
So even small amounts of depreciation.
It looks good. Yep, it sure looks good.
Yes.
And Teresa, do you mind sharing your big lift, your big accomplishment?
Oh, yes. So one of the things we noted when we first came on board was that there were property tax expenses. The affiliate was paying real estate taxes. And I knew from prior experience with clients that we should be tax exempt. Now, as municipalities having owned the properties prior to beading them over to the affiliate, there was no property tax. But the moment they were beaded over to the nonprofit, the county kicks in and charges real estate tax. So that was one of my first questions was, why aren't we tax exempt? So we did, in fact, apply during the application period in January and we were approved for an organizational exemption. So we're very excited about that. That's thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, literally. The other great news I received just before I left for this meeting, we had called the county because in a prior situation, slightly similar on another nonprofit, they missed applying, this is an annual exemption, every year you must apply for it. They missed applying and their tax bill was $22,000 for their property. And we found a way to get retroactively moved. So we called the county last week and asked if there was any potential relief for us for partiers. And we talked through the process and we move forward, we think we will have relief for those property taxes prior to exemptions for '22 and possibly '21 as well. So we're going to work on that.
So Teresa, do you have an estimated amount of dollars that are diverted back into the affiliate not having to be paid in property tax?
I wish I did. We haven't had enough time to explore. We know for a fact that we're in a rare age right now of approximately $10,000. So that's $10,000 that I do not expect will pay. We have paid in the past, the past two years, $35,000. And my hope is that we can improve that as well. But to give you an accurate annual, I would be taking a stab.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anything else on item number four A? Seeing none, thank you so much. That will take us to item number five, City of Tempe Affordable Housing Asset Map Preview. And I will turn this over to Wydell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board and Council. I'm Wydell Holmes, Director, San Juan Innovation Office. And first of all, at the last joint meeting, you asked for data. And that warms our hearts as we are a data-driven community alongside our stakeholders. And so today I'd like to share with you eight maps that we'd like to preview with you. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and thank Dr. Stephanie Dietrich. She's from our IT, she manages our IT and GIS team. And she is the brilliance behind these images that you're going to see today. And we're very open to your feedback and questions that we can answer today. And if not, we'll follow up with you on some that we may not have answers for. So this first map here is in regards to the Coalition's housing portfolio. So these are board members, these are your assets. There's about 61 rental units. And you can see that the legend down in the middle, the middle of the slide there will show you the concentration in these hexagon areas. We have purposely not pinpointed the exact addresses out of privacy for our tenants, but wanted to give you the general idea of where these are in relationship to across the city. You can see that most of these are above US 60. And so that was one of the questions that we chatted about at our last meeting in regards to where are the Coalition's assets? So this is one example of one of the maps that I'd like to share with you. The next map is in regards to market rate properties that have affordable housing units. And we use the term time bound. So these are private developments of about 75 properties. And these properties are, they basically have a clock on them. So one of them ranges from the one in the top left-hand corner, that is the 20 to 37 units, that is about 17 years to remain in affordable housing status. And the other one is about 30 years. And so this is another strategy that our community has in regards to working with private development to make sure that we are all doing our part in regards to affordable housing. And you'll see that most of those, or all of those assets right now for these private developments with the time-bound units are above US 60, north of US 60. And then our next map is about our Housing Choice voucher program. So Irma and her team, they work with federal government, about $13 million in housing subsidies each year. And they have over 1,200 units. And majority of the vouchers are utilized north of US 60. And you can realize that when Irma mentioned at our last meeting, she does have some landlord strategies that her team is putting into place so that we can start utilizing vouchers also south of US 60. So this just gives you an idea of, again, denoted for privacy, kind of the concentration of where a lot of these units lie here in the city. And then Hometown For All land locations. This is land that was purchased by the city or transferred from the city for development. And these would be transferred to a nonprofit which the affiliate is one of the nonprofits that this land would be transferred to. And so you can see we have about five areas, parcels right now that are, that are in this category with three of them already being purchased and one of the parcels being already transferred for units, for affordable units. And then on the next slide, what's interesting about what Dr. Dietrich has done with the gallery, when we give you the active link, when we've kind of gone through some of our QA QC, you'll be able to see some other maps that, for example, this one, this is the percent of affordable rentals. And you'll be able to see a difference between what happened in 2020 on your left to where we are at as of last year, 2022. Overall, the rent in 2022 is more affordable, the deeper the purple, more affordable north of US 60, and then therefore consequently less affordable south of US 60. The most significant increase of rent has been on the west side of Tempe. As you can see, we've kind of had some lighter parcels turn a little bit darker there. So the other thing too is you'll see in the right-hand southeast corner, if you look at Corona Village down in the bottom there, all the way to the right, those, that area has become less affordable in regards to rental affordability. So the next map, again, another bit of a contrast between 2020 and 2022 is the median gross rent. And the farther south you go in Tempe, we will find higher pockets of rent, especially in the most south, southern part of Tempe. You'll see a little bit towards the southeast corner of Tempe as well, alongside that 101 corner.
That's a question.
Councilwoman Perhaj?
When you, the gross, is this like 1,000, the 1,750, is that per one bedroom or is that?
It's by unit. I don't have the bedroom, numbers of bedrooms available for this one. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, because it makes a little bit of difference if it's one bedroom.
Versus five bedrooms.
Or five bedrooms or four bedrooms. So I wanted to.
I think it's just this unit, the home or the unit itself in regards to median gross.
That's a great question. And, you know, because we report in, this data is derived directly from the 22 Matrix of Affordability and Inventory Analysis. And that being said, we were reporting everything based on a family, for median family income. So I'm wondering if this is at least a two-bedroom, but we would need to clarify that for you.
Okay. Great question. Thank you. And so on the next slide here, we have our median home values. And you can see from 2020 to 2022, our matrix report imported, reported that our sale prices increased by 38% overall in Tempe. So median home value is highest in South Tempe and lowest in the northeast part of Tempe. And obviously with north of US 60 is the highest, it's directly the highest rent in regards to ASU is the gray, right there where it says Tempe, you can see a little gray parcel. North, south, and then west is we have higher rents there in relationship to ASU. The highest being in the 400,000 category. And then similarly, we have two years of homeownership rate. And on this particular map, most prevalent south of US 60 where rates are, homeownership is more prevalent than in north Tempe. I don't think any of that surprises this group here today. So I know Dr. Dietrich is on the line too. So if you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to hear about this gallery. We're in development still. We'll be, this will, these galleries, this gallery will be public facing when we go live. I know that there was another map that we are still working on in regards to city-owned parcels. And that probably will not be a public map in regards to kind of having strategic discussions with this group and with the city council. So with that, any questions or comments about the map gallery?
Sounds good. Thinking what else? Any questions for anyone? Questions, comments?
Yeah, I had one on a friend's slide. There's a slide that showed the properties that we own.
The hometown for all?
Yeah, so on that, on that slide, at one of our council meetings, we directed like $2.7 million for three properties that the city in Tempe owned to make those properties shovel-ready so we could eventually do, build our own affordable housing that we could take care of. Are these the three locations? Because I know they weren't, I'm just curious, I was wondering where those properties are.
Lots would be part of that?
No. No, no, no. It was three small. I believe it's all the ones that are located around the Apache Central Center, the Old Food City. And Dorsey and.
They were smaller properties.
We can talk about, I don't want to take up the time, but it was something different. It was a small, they were smaller properties, there were three of them. We wanted to make them shovel-ready, so we approved money to do it. But I don't, it's not, it's not the Food City that has the three properties there, it wasn't that one.
Or?
It wasn't this body.
The one I remember just vaguely, but we spent, it was either like 1.2 or 1.3 million to do the remediation on five city-owned lots. I mean, that might be. But I don't remember exactly where the lots were. I just know we were trying to get five city-owned lots shovel-ready for development.
A mayor was coming to mind is, you know, the COPAF and Newtown are getting ready to put the shovel in the ground. So I'm wondering if that prep work might have been at those particular projects.
It's not those, yeah. We'll look at, we'll look at, I don't want to take up the time. I'm just curious if that's not it.
If there's more money for development.
More land, let's do it.
And based on what the discovery is for those, we'll try to see what the most appropriate map would be for those properties. If it's not this, if it's more of a different map, certainly we'll work with Irma and her team to figure that out.
Councilwoman Carl, then? Board Member Drummond?
Um, yeah, on the market rate properties, affordable time bound.
Yes, sir.
This is not rent control. What is it that we're enticing them to do to not pay for their rents or that means?
That's a better question for Irma.
Director Drummond, how I would answer that is, this is all negotiated in what would be called a development agreement with the city. And so, so for example, a developer says, I'd like to build 100 units. I'll set 60 of them aside for workforce housing. And so with that said, what, how will you help me out in this development? We might, we might, you know, there might be a JIFlet, is there somebody that can help me save us maybe a little more heavily?
I can give an example. I mean, so one that I was thinking of was the Wexford Developments property in person, Farmer, where they agreed to build 200 units, so 180 of the units were going to be market rate, but then 20 of the units were going to be affordable for a 30-year time period. And the council granted them a JIFlet rate in order to make that happen. But we did it in exchange for the 30-year affordability on those 20 of it. So basically 10% of the entire developer. Thank you. Your work. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Yes.
So what is the plan, I mean, now that we have this information, I don't know. Uh, what, what is that, I guess, our next step and maybe ask what our.
Um, well, Director N'Mangula, it, there's probably a couple of different tracks all happening at the same time. So there's the work that we're doing here at the city. And then there's the work that us as a board of the Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing needs to take on identifying what our long-term strategies are in fulfilling what the city needs of us. And so that work is ours to do as.
That's what I was thinking of, maybe, I would say, like, we can maybe get together.
Absolutely.
Think about how we could further, now that we have this great information, you know, what we can do in the future to kind of further the goals that are in this document.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Bravos?
Yeah, so with all this information, I think it's, has it given us a flavor of what Tempe is doing to affect affordability? And then are we doing above our share? Are we doing more or less? You know what I'm saying? Compared to the region and what other cities are, maybe land size, what other cities are doing. What I'm trying to get to is, I don't want to be the front-runner because we're doing all affordable, the whole city's affordable. Are we doing a good enough job to have affordability throughout Tempe? And are we doing our share? Does this, how do we relate this information with what the other regions or the other cities are doing? And is there information that we can get on that? Because here's the thing, we constantly get from our community, we're not doing enough, not doing enough. I feel that we are doing a lot. I don't know how, where we're at. But I don't want to, when I look at some of those maps, I'm inundating a lot of the patchy with affordability. And I thought the goal of the city was to diversify and not to have clusters or start putting things in one area to make it affordable. So I like what we're doing, I like the map, but how does this relate to other cities? And where are we at in the market? Are we above the market, are we in the middle, below, those kinds of things? Can we get that affirmation? I think that's valuable information when we talk and tell about our story on what we're doing as a community.
Thank you, Councilmember N'Mangula. So going back to the 22 Matrix Report, the inventory and affordability analysis, that really kind of puts, gives us context as to where we land. Well, first of all, this provides us information on where we are. And once we know where we are, then we can determine where we want to go. So when we look at maps like that and we see that below the 60, there's very little affordability going on, we can start making decisions about, do we want to enter that space? With regard to the affordability and inventory analysis, it does give us context of who we are in this compared to peer cities who also have universities and similar demographics that we enjoy here in the city of Tempe. So we do have that, that information as well. As it pertains to the rest of the region, I think that because the city of Tempe is so far ahead than our sister cities here in the Maricopa Regional area, in knowing where we're at and also having defined where we want to go, it may be a little difficult to identify where we are in relation to them, because I don't know that we have the data to make those types of comparisons. But I can tell you this, with regard to hyper-focus on affordability, we seem to be, because that's the context of, you know, the mission of the affiliate and what the board expects of the affiliate to, the work that we're to get done. And really relying on the market to create the space for market rate and luxury so that we're not so out of whack and only doing affordable. The market is taking care of all the other housing types.
Right, right. And I think, I'd love to get to the story, and I don't know how hard this is with the other cities of just, can I share, can you share data with us? So we can just get an idea of what we're doing within Tempe and what the communities around us are doing. I think that story has to be shared. I'm not saying that we're not, we're still going to do affordability. There's still need, you know what I'm saying, various areas. I think that we can probably stretch out in South Tempe. I know that, I've talked to developers that want to do affordability, especially in the, in areas of South Tempe that are just dirt right now. And they have an opportunity to do something, that's strategic help that we need to get into and they need, we need to help them. But I think it helps provide those pockets. And I look at it too as families can live in those areas and enjoy those schools and enjoy their surroundings and hear the, you know, Hester and all those stuff, and it's connected to the buses and things like that. But at the same time too, I want to make sure that when we go, when we have these conversations, especially out in the community, it's like, no, we are doing our share in Tempe. And here's the region, and here's where we lie, and here's the bigger picture. Because the bigger picture is what everyone doesn't understand. And the other thing too is, we talk about Tempe, 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 but I talk about five-mile radiuses around the center of Tempe. If we talk about five-mile radiuses around downtown, it's what's the affordability in that radius? Because all those things have connectivity, you know, to, and we live in a, you know, blended cities. It's not just Tempe, it's the region. So that's where I'm kind of driving. I don't know if those conversations or calls to those cities can help out, just like, hey, what are you guys doing? Can you share some information? Should, I, by means, I'm going to do that in that, for the health and safety community that I'm on. I'm going to share this information to, for other people, for other cities to join us and utilize it.
I think we could support Irma's team in regards to looking at either some other indicators of affordability that we can normalize across cities, because we know our geography's different, our demographics are different. Just to kind of give us an idea, I mean, I heard Tim say we're kind of a little bit of a scorecard, but we can certainly work with our Valley Benchmark communities to try to see what would help us and where do we stand is what I think you're asking in regards to the relationship of what other cities are doing as intentional and purposeful as Tempe.
Councilwoman Perchut?
Thank you, Mayor. Great questions. Councilmember Bravos, I think for me, in hearing this, it provides an update to help inform decisions later, right? As we're looking at transportation, as we're looking at equity, as we're looking at the time-bound properties versus the projects that will be financed by Hometown For All, right? What are temporary ones, 30 years temporary versus permanent, 100% affordable housing? I think it helps me in this role to, to take that information into account as we're making other decisions also. I think also, you mentioned it, when you're at MAG, when we're with other cities, listen, listen and ask for those things and bring that information back. But I would rather staff sure if you hear it, but keep focusing on this and keep digging into this so that we know, because we have our own goals about a balance of inventory of different types of housing. And where are we on that? I think this helps me better understand where we are in inventory and equity in terms of geography. So great. And, and I think we keep asking those things and keep looking at it.
Madam City Ban?
Just wanted to thank you for that question. I think those are the questions we've been grappling with since 2016. We asked Mayor Bloomberg to step in and ask us to kind of, how do we set the goals? What do we look like? During that time, city of Tempe had over 50% of its housing stock was affordable. I think it was 54% wider, I'm at, before this last housing inventory. 34% was workforce. I think 17% was luxury. They paused when they saw that. And they said, if you can maintain this, you're going to surpass other cities. That was the narrative in 2016 or 17, being that with, obviously, things have changed, the market has changed. But I do believe everyone's asking the right question. First we start, we need to understand our climate, what do we look like right now? But it would help all of us to know where do we want to be? And we know that ecosystem of housing stock, we pride ourselves on being diverse and having something for everyone. That means to your, to your question is, does that mean 70% affordable and then that we don't invite working, you know, units or people that want something different, right? So I think you're asking, I'm hearing all the right questions. Stephanie Dietrich is online, she texts, and she said she's already on the census trying to figure out what other cities, the housing inventory looks like. And that's open data sources, so we will work on that.
And not to say, I'm sorry, but not say, I just came back from Shore, Illinois, and talking to firefighters out there, their city is median before general, you know, in terms of housing stock. And you can see it, I mean, in those pockets. But, and it's got this ability to be more, but it's so down. And it's not to say that Tempe, it would ever be that way or anything like that, but it just kind of says, we have this great balance. I don't want to be overbalanced, but I want to be balanced, you know, in the percentages that make sense, and that's all.
Councilwoman Perhaj, then Vice Mayor Adams?
My, my question, I guess I'm going to go outside of the city and outside of the state. I would like, can we have like a comparison to like the certain cities that fit our standards within the nation and see how we are actually doing? Because going against Mesa or Scottsdale is not really giving me an ideal, but I would like to see a city that has about the same population, the same size, and where are we at in that standards too? I know that's a lot to ask, question.
Actually, what rest of the nation, when we work with Harvard Bloomberg, we identified about six cities that we were similar to nationally.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Is coming to mind, college town.
Yeah.
Population, those sorts of things. So we do have that information. And I know our consultants work with those cities in mind when we're looking at where do we stand, kind of on that national benchmark for similar cities.
If you don't mind, it helps me to look at it and see it and help speak as ideals. Do you mind if we got some of that, if I, I don't know if all the council knows, but I would like to see, you know, where we kind of stand towards cities that actually look like us or our, you know, college towns or just how our population and demographics are, so I can see how we're actually.
Maybe do an executive summary of that report?
Yes, it would be easy to excerpt that straight out of the Matrix Report, because they benchmarked us, benchmarked us against three other like cities.
Yeah, that would be very interesting.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Call things, I think it's a great idea about benchmarking with other university cities in the country and to get as many as possible as close to the population as it is. But I want to bring up again, I think we do need to know what our other cities are doing surrounding us, because just like with the homeless situation, I feel like we're bearing the brunt of that in the east side of the, this, the valley. And I, I think the affordable housing, I want to have a good balance between affordable housing and market rate housing. And of course, I know we can do more in a sort of more affordable housing. I just, I just want to make sure that we, that our, our communities around us are doing their share. And I, I have a feeling they're not. And I guess if we can get those numbers from MAG, that would be helpful. And, and try to push on the other cities, hey, we, you know, we're doing this, but we need you to do it too. And so we're not just trying to go alone at this monumentous, monumentous task. So that's, that's where I am on it. I should say monumental task. Yeah, I'm correcting, I'm correcting myself. But anyway, that's, that's where I am on it. And I think we need to just keep on, yeah, working on affordable housing. We're staying creative. I think we're doing a great job with it. I know that there's some other areas that have come to light that we can't discuss at this meeting, but for affordable housing. And I just want to keep on moving forward with it, but get other people's, people on the, on our same page and, and have some help. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One quick thing, and I'm going to go to Councilman Carl, and I think the council, this is a really good conversation, and one of the things that I'm hearing a lot of is, I think something we're hearing very much with conversations about the proposed General Plan 2050. It's one of the themes that's coming up. And I think Vice Mayor and Councilman Bravos touched on it very. And I think the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Navarro touched on it very much so. I think people understand that we need more affordable housing and housing in all different income categories. But I think part of their frustration is when they hear about the shortage of units throughout the valley, they see the city of Tempe as doing a lot in all of these areas, but they many times look at these surrounding cities and say, what are they actually doing? So then when they see things about changing densities in the city of Tempe or just proposed change densities, the frustration becomes, I understand that we have to do our part, but we can't build all of the housing for every community that surrounds us. We need all of the other cities that are directly adjacent to chip in and also be providing housing in the affordable workforce and market rate categories. And the frustration sometimes is, they don't see that happening. It's very hard to push them, but I mean, but to Councilwoman Hodge's point, I think that in some of these places, like Maricopa Association of Governments, I think we can continue to bring that up to say, look, in Tempe, we're doing our part. We're green lighting all types of new affordable housing and market rate apartments and things of that nature. But it really is incumbent upon all of the cities in the east valley and throughout the valley entirely to make sure that they're doing their part and not just simply saying, we know there's a housing crisis, but we refuse to build a single new unit, or we refuse to rezone anything from commercial to mixed use to bring in more housing. So I, I love the conversation here because this is very, it mirrors a lot of what I'm hearing in the community. They know the city of Tempe, the council, the staff are doing the right thing, but I think their biggest frustration is they sometimes feel like we're almost having to do too much to make up for other cities deficits because they're not doing nearly enough. So, Councilwoman Garrel.
That's a really good point. So I sit on the local jurisdiction committee, I'm a co-chair there, and I was trying to bring the point about homelessness specifically to the group that we have, 38 other cities in there, just trying to say, we, Phoenix and Tempe can't do it all. We need the other cities to open up and help out. So the same thing, but affordable housing, it didn't, it didn't go very well, very well. I'm telling you, nobody raised their hand and said they'll help out. But I'll, anyway, but, so my question is, so we do this housing inventory just in 2021, just last, 2022, sorry, just last year. And in there, I think the presentation that you guys gave us, there was a PowerPoint that talked, that had listed other cities and how we compare. Would it be possible to resend that to us so that, because that already had a lot of the information that we've been talking about, it was in that presentation? And then the, the affordable, the housing study was also, had a great executive report in the front of it on what our housing stock is and what it was for. So maybe if that's possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Manager.
The only thing I want to mention and caution, that reported inventory was based on those original goals. So do you remember when we, we went back and the charge for the consultant was to look at our original distribution of 54 bases?
So, so it's skewed.
Keep that in mind when you're looking at the report, because that's what Irma and I had talked about after. The lens by which you're looking at it is with the expectation that the goal was set, that that was vision for the city. You often do.
So then, so then, does the report still then state, and we still, still high in luxury and low in affordable, is that, is that?
Has that changed? Have identified gaps.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's so good to know.
What is, how did it shift on your end? Well, it shifted, we had more workforce, so it said we were in the green for workforce, like we don't need any more workforce, that we were deficit in the affordable and the market rate for luxury. So that is why the zero to 80 AMI was identified in the report, some of our RFPs for affordable housing, to help with that balance. But one of the things we discussed is, they really looked at it from the established goals that were identified in 2017. What I'm hearing here, Mayor Council, is that you might want to reconsider those things. Absolutely.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board Member Trump.
Yeah, a lot of my question was answered about let's not be a magnet for other cities in the valley. You know, it's nice to be the beacon, but you don't want to be the destination. I know in the Housing Choice voucher program that there is high priority given to people that already work in Tempe, they're favored in being able to get Housing Choice vouchers. Is there some sort of metric like that for people that want to live in Tempe but work in Scottsdale? Would they not fit so well here? Is it a good job?
Probably ask Irma that question, I guess.
Director Drummond, I don't really think I understand your question.
We have a limited amount of affordable units when someone makes an application.
Are you talking about the units specific to the Housing Choice voucher program?
No, no.
Or affordable units who have the city?
Just the affordable. Our Housing Choice was like that.
Right. So I do not think that there is any possible way to execute a rule where a preference would be given to someone who works in Tempe but, or works in Scottsdale but lives in Tempe or the other way around. I don't think you can tell landlords to prefer.
Oh, that's true. It's not a problem.
Councilwoman Garrel? It's kind of the same lines. I mean, is there a possibility of a program that could be started for people that are working in Tempe that want to live nearby where they work at? So it's affordable, kind of like a combination to where it's working with their employer to help with those resources, working with the city to find those resources for that affordability to kind of, that's where, I, I think when we talk about this whole thing, people want to work and live in Tempe. People want to work and live in Tempe. Well, if I look at the data, I guarantee people are not working and living in Tempe, they're doing one or the other. And so how do we make that true? You know what I'm saying? How can we actually make that true to where we're doing what we're saying we're doing? And I'm just putting it out there, probably is something to think about because if there's, must be a way, I think about a hotel, an Omni Hotel, they have workers there, would, is there something, working with Omni to work with the city to find locations for those workers that might choose to live in Tempe? I don't know. And here's the other thing, can we separate college from actual work? You know, people that are trying to provide an income? Because too much, we get college students that take advantage of affordability. So that's really the, the kind of the damnedest thing, you know, is we got this real wonkiness of, yeah, the college students are, are not, you know, they're, they're low income, they're not making any money at all. They qualify for X, Y, and Z. How do, how do we carve that out?
I was going to ask the question, Councilman Garrel, just picture, I totally understand. Are, are you talking about the creation of additional affordable and attainable units? Or are you talking about more or less working with the Omni or other corporations to identify existing resources that are in the city?
Yeah, it'd be like, if I had a worker at the Omni that I knew that probably not going to college or working for the family, but they need a place, you know, more set, more close to work with, how do we get them to work with the city to identify those people so that we can find that group of class, that affordability that makes it convenient for them to work where they're at? It, I kind of leave it on the table. Like, oh, there seems like we're, we're not telling this, we're saying the story, but we're not really telling this story the way we should be telling the story, that we're actually hitting a certain group of people and we're doing what we're saying we're doing. When we talk about affordability, staying in Tempe, working in Tempe.
Can I follow up before you say something? Because I'm telling you what we're doing in the school districts, the school districts are working on that same situation because teachers say it all the time, that they can't work in, they can't live in the city that they teach in every day. And I know the mayor's had meetings and I've had meetings with them, trying to find ways of bringing our teachers away back in so they can actually afford to live in this city as well as teach in the city too.
Right, exactly. So it's those types of programs, workforce, low income, whatever it is, but we're really identifying the people that are really working, really doing it, and we're trying to provide for them.
So with regard to, what is strange, and I, and I don't know how to reconcile this other than to say it's a shortage of units. But when you look at our housing inventory, as City Manager Mchowsi mentioned, we have an abundance of what we categorize as workforce housing. So that's housing that's coming in at 80% to 120% of area needing income. And that is specifically geared towards teachers, emergency responders, essential workers. So we have an overabundance of the city of Tempe in that type of housing, yet I'm understanding you to share that they are not finding units in the one category that we have an overabundance in.
What, okay, let me answer this. How are we getting that information out? Are you, how is it, is the fire department getting, hey, guys? I'm not seeing it in the fire department when the recruits come in. Where are you living at? How can we help you with housing in this area? How are we getting that out? Okay, how are we getting that out to the teachers? You want to live here, we got a program that if you work with the city, we'll try to find you places. You see what I'm saying?
I do. Councilmember Navarro, and I believe, so when it comes to workforce housing, the city is not, we're not administering housing for that particular AMI. We're more focused on the affordable because nobody's delivering on the affordable.
Right, right. Okay, that's, same with affordable though. How we work with the, with the workers to try to identify those people that are working in Tempe, that want to live in Tempe, to where they might get first priority versus someone that's coming in from another place because of the workforce. That's why I'm trying to pick through it.
Bear in mind though, a majority of the owners who are affordable units, however, are private owners. And so there's no, we can't dictate to them who it is that they ended up leasing to.
Because I'm thinking about the AJ side we bought, that we are going to put the units in there. We have control of that. That's what I'm thinking, that's our opportunity where I know it's not going to go to a college student.
Yeah. I, I was going to say, I completely, Councilwoman Navarro, nail on the head, but I mean, I think that is the, that is the real reason for the Hometown For All program in the first place is, is that if we actually are the ones that control the land, we can then make more determinations. It's a lot harder when you're sort of debating with a private sector partner who might need more return on investment to actually make a project work than when you're just simply a city and there's not a profit motive and all you're trying to do is create the kind of diversity that you want to have in all of these different income categories. So right, in that situation with the Apache Central project, where we put out the RFP saying that we wanted up to 400 units of mixed income housing and at least 50% had to be within that zero to 80% AMI that Rosa talked about, I think that's, that's also, I know what we were trying to do with the Tempe Performing Arts Center building as well, is that, that building is right smack dab in the middle of the downtown. It was the Tempe Center for the Arts before we had a TCA. And the biggest thing, when I would talk to the hotel general managers in the downtown, we obviously now have the Omni, the Canopy, the West and the Mission Palms, they would all say, we, we can hire employees, but we can't keep people here. The retention is very difficult because a lot of them are driving in from the west valley, 45 minutes to an hour each way, gas prices around $5 a gallon, and the second someone offers these folks $2 or $3 more dollars an hour, they're gone. And so if there's some way to create more attainable housing in and around the downtown, that would not only help us hire people, but would actually help us keep people. And I think about the people waiting tables and bartending in the downtown, the people who are doing the housekeeping, the cooking, and a lot of the hotels. I think that's why, to Councilwoman Navarro's point, the more that we actually own some of these properties and then we can dictate what goes into an RFP, then we're not debating with someone who has more of a profit motive, we're just doing what we think is the right thing and actually trying to fulfill a meeting. Councilwoman Tuchin.
No, I have a totally different comment, but I just reminded you. But maybe that's something that we could do, is more, because I forgot, I took a client who was trying to find workforce housing, right? And then couldn't find anybody, like they have units and couldn't find anybody to go in it. And they went to ASU and then I sent them to you guys. But maybe there's a way that these board could kind of either work with the chamber or somebody and, you know, kind of like College Connect, because I'm just thinking about, I was going to use a different word, but like College Connect, like will find some way to connect these people to some, if we have an excess of housing. Why don't we try to figure out some sort of thing and maybe it's housing? I mean, I'm not trying to make anyone work, so we'll help.
No, and I, and I feel you over there too, because I'm not trying to create more work, but it's to that point, you're, you're actually spot on. It's working with the chambers, it's like, we got this program, if you have people that consider this program, please use.
Or they need units, like we can, like Mary, like Joel, who's trying to find units, he has units, he has nowhere to go. He's like, what do you ask him? And he's, he told me to go someplace else. And like, then I told him to go here and I told him to go away. And then, you know, and so he's wandering around town trying to find, because he has a very specific niche of people and he's trying to provide whatever's housing. And so we could find some sort of, we could think through, whether it's a database or just some sort of just place that we could send people, we could maybe hook people up, you know, and it's, and then maybe it's nothing more than, well, it's important, but it's something to like connect people who are trying to do one thing, the other, if we have access to housing. That's the career we do.
Councilwoman Tuchin.
Thank you, Mayor. Irma, aren't you already working on incentives to work with landlords? And just, isn't that on your plate? Couldn't we roll that in and pull in the chamber, let's say, and have businesses, right? If I were a landlord, if I owned something, I would want a steady stream of customers, tenants that had gainful employment that could be consistent. So isn't that what you're already working on? What they're saying are great ideas, but I think it's already on your plate.
Wow.
Yeah, no, 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 no. But I mean, this would help, right? Am I, this is not new. I've heard this before from you all, that this is, you're trying to come up with incentives for landlords.
Councilmember Tuchin, that is in fact correct. Our focus in the landlord engagement programming, however, is in getting our voucher participants into housing, which year after year after year becomes far more complicated and difficult than you can imagine, even with, you know, having guaranteed rent paid on their behalf and, and security deposits paid by the city and some level of guarantees that who is going to be living in their units and going to set it on fire and then disappear into the ether and not be able to recoup it, recoup anything back. So we're already with this small subset of Tempeans trying to figure out how to open up housing options for them. So yes, but conversely, I think what you shared, Angela, is a great idea, something that.
I was just going to give the board something else. We could work on something together, us, our little board here.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have Christopher Grossbeck here, who's, you know, brought on to the landlord engagement. And while I had a far more narrow view of what he would be participating in, I think these are fabulous ideas.
Yes, Councilwoman Garrel.
So we had a landlord symposium a couple of years ago, I think it was, where we did a lot of publicizing to people, potential landlords and people who are already landlords and working in the voucher program, found a gentleman that was, loves working with our voucher program. He was so incredibly nice and we did a little video and stuff with him. But when we had this symposium, we had, we had more staff there than we had landlords coming. And it was really, it was really unfortunate because you know there's so many landlords out there. And it was publicized for a long time. So I'm glad you're here and that's one of the things they're going to do because we had such great information and such great help there. Home Inc., I think, was there, Home Inc., the one, the insurance people.
I believe Christopher was there as well.
Yeah, it was incredible, but we, we just didn't get the landlords. We need to, we need to help the landlords find us.
We need to become landlords a lot more too.
Talk to her. Okay, so just a couple of things, Irma, and looking at this, I'm sorry, we're president and looking at this in terms of, we know how many units we have, we know what the affordable rates are, we know where the housing, but do we know the vacancy rates and what the duration is of those vacancies? Because then that helps us to understand and think a little bit more around, well, if we've got this many people who want to live in Tempe, then, because what happens is people will compete for these units. I mean, just realistically, if you are a renter in the city and it's affordable for you, whether it's market rate or deemed workforce or affordable, then sometimes you're competing to get into a unit as well. So do we have that information or is that available?
Director Harris, absolutely, the information is available. I do not have it here with me today. So with regard to vacancy rate, I can't tell you the entire Valley reports low vacancy rate. And Christopher, do you happen to know for the Valley what the vacancy rate might be?
I don't.
Okay. We will follow up, but it is well known that our vacancy rates are very, very low because we have a severe shortage of units, of housing in general.
Anyone else?
You, you all are talking about how you interface with prospective renters. You all are talking about how you interface with prospective renters, or people that lease and rent out their buildings. I've said before, they take a look at the affordable, at the, excuse me, at the voucher, Section Eight people, as if everybody came from Cabrini-Green, and they're gonna tear the place up. And I use one of those vouchers, and I've been with it ten years, or am I? And able to stay despite that grit gouging that's happened in the last couple of years, and able to remain. There's, there's some education that should be given to the property owners that, like, during COVID, a lot, a lot of people didn't pay their rent, because they had a moratorium on emissions. But that wasn't the case for people that were on Section Eight, for instance. They all got paid. But if you ask the, the view of landlords in Tempe, there, there, I know that there are fewer and fewer renting to that, because they think they're gonna tear the place up, and bring the cops. John Carter's in the bar.
Yep, I know, because I was on Section Eight, so I know what you're talking about. They have a, it's a, it's a mind, it's a narrow mind frame when they see it. They hear Section Eight, they hear the worst, they hear people who are gonna have a hundred kids and having parties every weekend, and yes, they need to change that narrative.
Well, I know, one of the things that I know we're working on, kind of, that the cities of Tucson and Phoenix have also done, is kind of talking about enacting a source-of-income discrimination ordinance at the city of Tempe, so landlords cannot refuse someone who has a housing choice voucher because they, there's some kind of stigma or stereotype, and that's what that's meant to do. If you have a voucher, and I have the ability to pay, you cannot turn me away, because I don't want, you know, you here. So, so, yeah, I know that's something that Irma, her team are working on.
Oh, I love that.
I believe we'll be presenting on that next week.
This, would be this Thursday, or?
Is it Thursday?
Is it this Thursday?
Yeah, we have one, oh, okay, this Thursday.
Wrong, I tell you, Irma, Irma, you're getting me, and next week, it's gonna be no one there with you.
I'll be there. I'll be somewhere.
Just saying.
I'm not gonna be there.
Um, all right, anyone else? All right. Well, thank you so much. Great conversation, as always. Let's move forward here to item number six, City of Tempe Hometown For All Process Preview, and that's Wydell again.
If you don't mind, may I? So I just wanted to know, I'm gonna pass it back to Wydell, but I wanted to share with you, you know, so Hometown For All had been established when I first got here. It was already alive and well and, and working, and, and so that it was, I was having difficulty really trying to get my arms wrapped around, like, all of the various factors that go into create, this creating of a Hometown For All process. And so, you know, I liken myself to be a little bit on the intelligence side, but I was really, really struggling with this. And thankfully, City Manager and Chelsea recognized that and assigned Wydell to helping me navigate. And lo and behold, this is far more complicated than we ever imagined. And so Wydell and I have been skipping down the Yellow Book Brick Road with one another, learning all things Hometown For All. And she's gonna talk to you a little bit about what we've learned, how far we've come, and how much more work that we have in front of us, but it's all very, very positive. So Wydell, thank you for accompanying me on this journey, and...
Thank you. So I'll just preface this brief update in regards to innovation. It's hard to be first, I mean, Rose and I say that a lot. Hometown For All was created by the mayor, approved by the council in 2021. And really, you have to create that roadmap, so I'll build upon your Yellow Book Road thing. And with that means there's a lot of twists and turns that come up when you're working with the city, with nonprofits, with multiple stakeholder groups, boards, stakeholders. So this has been really a process of discovery. And I'd like to thank Majla and Councilmember Chen, they have been great at letting us pick their brains from a Majla standpoint in regards to her work, the other hats that they wear, and then Councilmember Chen's hat also in regards to fundraising. And so what we've discovered, you know, I'll just remind you, is Hometown For All, really, it's about city investments, and it's really about funding. And so we know that fifty percent of certain permit fees go into the Hometown For All fund, and then the other funds are raised through pledges that rely on to donations that would then be given directly to the affiliate. And so even that unique piece of funding gets a little complex when you start to look at the details. But really, what we have discovered is that we want to have a more strategic approach with the Hometown For All fund, moving from kind of an ad hoc approach, that shifting to a fundraising mindset, which we, which is a little bit different. I grew up in government, I still in government, and so having a fundraising mindset and approach is a little bit different than just sharing information about a great opportunity to people who might want to pledge. And so with that comes some key communication points. Specifically, we've done a bit of an exercise of different roles that every group like yourselves play, as well as our staff, and making sure that we're avoiding conflicts of interest. And so we found some ideal communication points around that. We also found some opportunities and unrealized opportunities for markers and some, for marketing. Some would be with brokers and architects. We also know that there's some process that is in need for intentional handoffs. Donor management is a relationship. It is not just a transactional activity. And so that sort of relationship has to be nurtured, and it has to be discovered at the right time, and, and maintained along its life cycle. So we know that there's some work to be done there. And then also, Irma and her team, standard operating procedures for a lot of this, whether it be from timeliness of invoicing to appreciation and recognition of donors, and how do we do all of that from not only a city standpoint, but most importantly then at that point, from the affiliate standpoint. And the merging and separation of roles is also what we've had a lot of discovery about here. And I see Teresa shaking her head, because there is a big difference when you start to put all these different parties together, to have a one common purpose, which is affordable housing in Tempe, but we all come at it from our different angles. And so like, like affordable housing, Hometown For All has a lot of complexity to it, and we've been trying to peel the onion and separate in order to understand where we have the best leverage points, and not miss any opportunities that are inherent in Hometown For All. And so that is where we're at with this process, and it's involved staffing. I'm so glad that Tanya Chavez has been able to schedule us on a weekly basis to kind of get our heads together and really purposely work on this and kind of put all the pieces in place. That includes our community development team, that includes our housing team, our affiliate. Irma keeps changing hats every time we meet.
Economic development.
Yes, economic development. So I'm just really appreciative that this has really been a discovery, but we're really gonna be strategic about how we, how we approach this. And I always say that hope is not a strategy, so we're coming up with strategies regarding how do we realize a lot of these opportunities for Hometown For All, and really get that fund larger, healthier, and committed into housing.
Thank you, Wydell.
That's my cheerleading.
I like it, I like it. Anyone from the board, council, any comments or questions? Councilmember Navarro, the Councilwoman?
Yeah, no, first of all, I just want to say I appreciate you guys and all the work you guys have done. I mean, it really is magnificent. I mean, seriously, where we're at today in terms of housing and how we're applying what we say we're gonna do, and you guys have done a great job on taking this. I know that we sit here and spin ideas of the, me especially, at the last minute. But I think it's, it's some of those things that we get bombarded on, that we not want to make sure that we're doing and we're pushing and we're achieving a little bit more, it's not being satisfied where we're at, so to speak. But at the same time, I want to recognize that you guys have really done a tremendous job and just manifested this whole event. So I appreciate everything that's going on.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I was gonna say the same thing. I think it's great what you're doing. I love, when I saw this slide in our packet, I'm like, oh, strategic, yes. Oh, procedures, yes. So thank you so much for what you're doing, because we, we need this, and the only way to make it better is to go through this, and so thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Chen, and Board Member, for being able to help a guy.
Councilman?
I just want to echo. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Great job, everyone.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, seeing that, there's no other further comments or questions. That brings us to item number seven, which is adjournment. Just wanted to thank everyone for spending their Tuesday evening with us, and thank you for all the great work, really great conversation, and we look forward to keeping, moving forward together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
And we're here, and I know it would be a pretty... I remember very poorly what we were talking about. We're like, we're gonna get a shadow, we're like, shut up already. And then we get, it's like, we're all bad.